I'd like to call the meeting to order of the City Saint Holiness Planning Commission, regular meeting on Tuesday, July the 18th. Mr. Knudsen, being you just got back, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Present.
Commissioner Pond?
Present.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Present.
Chair Kistner?
Here.
Next item is public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please have the time limit of three minutes. Is there any public comment? Closed public comment. The next item are the consent items. Consent item number one is approval of minutes of June the 20th, and I want to pull that. 4.2 is Harrison Resident Design Review at 1660 Kearney Street. And 4.3 is Martin &amp; Corrison Renovation Design Review. Anyone wish to pull it?
4.2?
You want to pull 4.2?
I just have a question. I think I know the answer, but I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone in the public?
I can answer the questions on 1660 Kearney.
Oh, okay. I mean, it's just a question to the staff.
Bob, wait a minute. You're not supposed to be talking directly.
Oh, no.
I pulled 4.1. I'm pulling 4.1 because we do not have a quorum in order to approve the minutes, and therefore I'm going to ask the commission if they would review the tapes of last meeting, and we will then approve the minutes at the next meeting. Okay?
Okay.
All right, Bobby.
Oh, I was just wondering, on 4, is that where we are, on 4.3? Oh, no, 4.2. On the, it talks about adding water-using fixtures as needing to look at the water issue. And I noticed that they added a bathroom. Now, I also realize that you only have to worry about it if there's an extra bedroom. If you add a bedroom, then the water issue has to be looked at. So I was just wondering if you could clarify that for sure. I mean, it says that in order to require this new development, that it would have to be a construction that would introduce any freestanding building that contains water-using fixtures. Now, I'm assuming that goes from, you're talking about if you build a structure from the bottom up, is that, but adding the bathroom does not fall into that category?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted that clarified. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve 4.2 and 4.3?
We're moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pond?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Next item is administrative determination. That's 5.1. Administrative determination authorizing a street piano to be located in Lyman Park and in the Parks and Recreation Zone District.
Thank you, Chair Kistner. The item before you, as mentioned, is an administrative determination that the provision of a street piano located on city-owned property in the Parks and Recreation Zone District, zoning district, is allowed as a permitted land use pursuant to the municipal code 17.72.020. A member of the public requested the city council to review, or direct staff to review and options for allowing a street piano. You may have seen these in other cities. It's a relatively common fixture, or becoming more common. And the city council asked staff to work with this applicant, his name's Mr. Bill Ryan, to review the regulations and see where these could be located. After taking a look at the existing regulations regarding the use of parks, staff found that this could be found to be determined, a consistent use with the park regulations, and staff has made that determination. A notification to all properties within, I don't remember if we did 300 or 500 feet, of Lyman Park has been sent out to let folks know that this determination has been made and is being presented to the commission in case there's any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I do. I wonder, this looks great. Fantastic. Great idea. Is this, should this be in front of the Parks and Rec Committee? Since it is a park and they're sort of in charge of the park?
We did get that question from a Parks and Rec committee member yesterday. I reached out to him and have not been able to speak with him. That is an excellent suggestion. Council directed staff to work with him on the determination. However, we can present it to the Parks and Rec Committee and let them know. Mr. Ryan has not provided us kind of the concrete details as to how his proposals, his timeline regarding his proposal, so we will bring it before them and let them have a discussion of it.
Yeah, because it seems like, sort of from a planning department perspective, yes, whether this is a permitted use and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, but it also seems like from the Parks and Rec, given their responsibility, that it'd be also, I mean, maybe Mr. Brown could give us some greater insight here, but that it would seem necessary to have their sort of assent that this is a use, a use that they want to see in Lyman Park.
Staff does agree with that. It was somewhat of an oversight by the planning department staff, given we don't typically present to them.
I have not addressed that. I'm happy to look at that now if you'd like. I think it's appropriate. Whether it's necessary, I would have to look at the ordinance and take a moment.
Staff can commit to providing it to the Parks and Rec Commission and getting their input.
Okay. So that's the determination. All right, next items are public hearings. 6.1 is a request by Karen Elfaro and Cooper Cream on behalf of Wagner Ranch LLC for adoption of, adaptation of a resolution approving a lot line adjustment between parcels 009362015 and 009362016 to increase the size of an existing .38 parcel to 5.2 acres with a corresponding reduction in the size of the existing 15.28 acre parcel to 10.46 acres. The subject parcels are located north of Sulfur Springs and west of Highway 29 in the medium-density residential and A-20 zoning districts. Do you have a staff report, Mr.?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kistner. One item to note, this item was continued from the June 20th, 2017 meeting of the Planning Commission in order to give the applicant more time to share information with adjacent property owners.
I have a point of order to ask. If I'm going to make any disclosures, do I do it now or later?
Ex parte is, I think, appropriate to do now.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, so, I'm sorry. I had something written and I forgot, I left it home, so I have some of the names, but not all of the names. I was concerned, I spoke with David Greer, who called me, and he owns property over in this area, and I also spoke with the realtor, but this was after, between the time I was a planning commissioner and I wasn't, but I spoke with the realtor for Bert and his wife, and I don't remember their last name, but, and also with the, someone who works at the title company, American First Title Company, about simply the legality of the two properties. Because the question had come to me from someone else, you know, was the, was the little .38 parcel, was that a tax assessment parcel or was it a legal parcel? And so I called the county. I also spoke with people at the county. I spoke with someone in records, someone in the mapping department, and someone in the public works department. And they all corroborated that it was, that these two parcels were both legal parcels. So that was the subject of the discussions that I had with all parties with whom I spoke, and that was the outcome. So I don't know if I need to say anymore or not.
Do you have a report?
Okay, so the applicant is requesting this lot line adjustment in order to essentially move the lot line distinguishing the two parcels as shown on the graphic above to coincide with the zoning boundary between the medium-density residential and the A-20 agricultural district. This would result in the transferance of approximately four-point acres of land from the larger parcel to the smaller parcel, resulting in one 10 and 1/2 acre parcel and one just over 5 acre parcel. No land is being rezoned or otherwise changed, and the total number of parcels, in this case, two, will not change as a result of the proposed adjustment. In fact, this adjustment would eliminate having a parcel of two land use designations and would provide the added benefit of creating a parcel boundary where the city's land use designations change and where the urban limit line currently is. Subdivisions, including the review procedures for lot line adjustments, are regulated by municipal code 16.08, is required by section 1608070B. Each parcel's involved in the proposed lot line adjustment are legally established parcels owned by the applicant. In addition to identifying application requirements, this section grants the planning director and public works director the joint discretion to jointly approve a lot line adjustment. If jointly approved by the planning and public works directors, it requires that the directors make a written report to the planning commission at its next scheduled meeting. At that meeting, if the planning commission decides by majority vote to formally review the lot line adjustment, then a planning commission hearing date is set, public notice is sent out, and the proposal is inconsidered by the commission. If the commission decides not to review the lot line adjustment, then the planning director must publish the action to approve the lot line adjustment in the newspaper and send out a notice to all property owners within 300 feet of the site notifying them of the decision. Upon receipt of such notice, the property owners may then choose to appeal this decision, the action of the planning director and public works director, back to the planning commission and pay the required fee, which is $1,000. In order to alleviate the overlapping and cumbersome administrative requirements, decision on the lot line adjustment has been referred to the planning commission for consideration, keeping with past practice. This approach has the added benefit of streamlining the process as it avoids the necessary necessity of staff bringing its decision to the planning commission for validation, then coming back at a separate meeting if the commission disagrees with that decision. In addition, this approach avoids a scenario whereby property owners end up being informed by staff after the fact of an approval, which would then require the residents or property owners to appeal this decision, including the $1,000 fee, in order for it to be considered at a public hearing. The proposed lot line adjustment was included in the public hearing notice for this meeting, and a notification was sent to all property owners within 500 feet. Therefore, the action on this lot line adjustment is before the commission this evening. Staff finds no general plan consistency issues related to the proposed lot line adjustment. General plan land use designations and the urban limit line would remain in their current configuration. No development is proposed in either parcel at this time. The lot line adjustment would eliminate having a parcel of two land use designations and would align parcel boundaries with the bifurcated land use designations and location of the urban limit line. For these reasons, staff recommends that the planning commission determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to section 15305, and accept the required findings and adopt a resolution approving a lot line adjustment between parcels 009362015 and 009362016. That's all. I would be happy to answer any questions. The planning director is here to answer any questions, Tom Brown, and the applicant is here if you have any questions of them as well.
Any questions of staff?
I have some questions for staff, yes. I don't have a copy of the ordinance with me, but I was looking at it recently, and this is a question for you, Tom. My recollection from a couple of days ago is that the ordinance states that if the application meets the criteria set out for approval, that the planning director and public works director shall approve. It seems to me that's mandatory, not discretionary.
Yeah, generally, lot line adjustments are deemed to be quasi-ministerial. In other words, unless you can find that there is some manner in which the application is not in compliance with some code or some provision of the MAP Act, you are legally bound to approve it.
My next subject isn't really a question, but this just seems the appropriate moment for me to express my concern. And I did have a conversation with Noah earlier today about this. What is set out in the staff report as presented by Aaron looks to me like a process in which, as a practical matter, the ordinance has been amended without going through the amendment I have a very strong negative reaction to that approach. It seems to me like the sort of thing one often speaks about as the nose of the camel under the tent. And I'm also very much aware of the fact that the city's general plan and zoning ordinance, which for purposes of discussion I think of as a kind of administrative infrastructure analogous to our physical infrastructure that Erica knows so well, is in a state of considerable disrepair and deferred maintenance. So I fully appreciate the planning director's concern about the value of adapting the process to provide for greater efficiency and reduce staff time and the enormous backlog of work necessary to bring the current land use planning infrastructure, as I call it, into proper But I have to say that I am concerned that if we make a habit of this kind of adaptation, the net result is to make it easier rather than harder to do what really needs to be done, which is to amend the code. Or put it differently, if we get too comfortable with how we adapt to the status quo in which the code is not amended but we're not following it, then I'm afraid the time at which we'll actually get it properly done gets further out rather than closer. That said, having taken the planning director's concerns to heart, I'm not proposing to upset the apple cart here, but I did want to make sure everyone understood my concerns, because this, for me, will be a theme ongoing. I see a lot of land use planning infrastructure, as I call it, that needs repair, and for me, that's a priority.
Commissioner Hardy, can I ask you a question on that comment? I actually don't think I fully understand your comment. Is it that we're not following the codes as written in this regard?
Yes. The code sets out a procedure, and we're not following.
So how difficult would it be simply to follow that procedure?
Well, we can easily follow the procedure. The planning director can speak for himself, but I think I can fairly characterize his concern, expressed it to me earlier today. That involves significant additional staff time potentially and places additional burdens on the applicant and the neighbors.
On this particular item?
For all lot line adjustments. It's a categorical problem. Okay? It's come to my attention, because I just took this seat and I have this application with the staff report in front of me, but I'm raising it not because I have a concern particular to this application, because, it's because I have a concern about how we deal with problematic elements of the code on an ongoing basis.
So Commissioner Hardy, shouldn't we rely on our legal counsel to determine whether our actions here are, you know, something we should, you know, continue, or whether we need to be in conform, one would think, one would need to be in conformance?
Can I clarify in response to that? I mean, what I'm hearing you say is that we shouldn't get in the habit of adapting to a really bad code, rather than changing the code so that it will reflect what we want, and then we can, because that undermines the whole democratic process, or, to my mind, anyway. I mean, if you, if you have codes and laws and you can't follow them because they're not in good shape, then it's difficult.
It generates a whole host of problems. I'm not sure that democracy itself is in your mind, but...
Okay. A little dramatic there.
But it's problematic.
That's my fear. Anyway, yeah, I hear, I hear that. I agree with that. But, you know, I also know that we've been trying to get to changing the code for at least four years, if not longer, you know, longer than that, so...
Chair Kistner?
Yeah.
I don't know whether you want my input on this or not at this point or at all, and I'm prepared to wait until other commissioners weigh in on it or not, but I am available if you'd like me to weigh in.
I think we welcome your comments, Mr. Brown.
So I have discussed this with the planning director, and I, I also was aware of and sensitive to Commissioner Hardy's comments about the fact that this is not actual adherence to the terms of the ordinance. But that's not the end of the discussion from my standpoint. My standpoint often can be distilled down to, can I defend this in court? In other words, is it, would it be legal for you to do what the planning director has put before you this evening? And my answer to that is unequivocally, yes, it would be legal and it is defensible. Is that best practices? No. I think that the planning director would readily concede that when we tackle our zoning ordinance update, that with the appropriate direction from you all, this would be, it would be appropriate and proper to enshrine in the updated zoning ordinance the actual practice of the commission and the city with respect to lot line adjustments. But the short answer is, is that what is, the procedure before you this evening is legal and defensible.
I, too, have some of the same concerns Lester has expressed. We have a set of rules. You know, our job is to basically take actions based on the rules as presented to us. I'm reluctant to start the ball rolling as my first action here, to go ahead and ignore those rules. I mean, that Lester's point that what's in code now is more cumbersome and more costly, but I'm going to disagree with you a little bit on that, Lester. The way it's written, if the public works director and the planning director, vice versa, make a finding that it meets the requirements, and it comes to us, and we make no objections, it's done. So it has the potential of actually being a quicker and easier process than what we're going through now. No public hearing is required.
That's correct.
If, if, if those two make a determination and it comes in front of us, and we make no objection, it goes through with no public hearing required. So I would suggest that's an easier process than what we're going through now. So, given that, you know, the attorney's statement that this is semi-ministerial, I would suggest that 90% at least of the lot line adjustments would sail through on an easier process than what we've just gone through, or what we're attempting today. So with that, I suggest that we stick with the process as written. Have a finding from the public works director and the planning director and move forward on that, rather than adapting the council's will and the stated process to do something different.
I, you know, I'm, thank you for thinking about what you're saying. I have a question, though. If we did, exactly as it's written, would the, would property owners nearby still be notified?
After the fact?
So the process as the code identifies, and I just want to chime in, welcome, everyone, new commission. But also, so this practice was...
You're welcome.
Essentially, the result of some frustration on the, on the part of the commission and concerned neighbors through the previous lot line adjustments that they didn't feel they were able to participate in. So however, this is a new commission, and staff is 100% open and interested in getting direction from this new commission to implement their will as best as we are able. So getting to Commissioner Monet's question, the process as it's written would be that the planning director and the public works director, should they find the application to meet all the criteria, approve the requested lot line, or, I'm sorry, lot line adjustment, bring it before the commission to allow the commission to review it, should they see fit, should they choose to. And then, should the commission not choose to review it, the decision stands and the neighbors get noticed of that action. There then, their methodology to bring it to a public hearing is an appeal which has a $1,000 fee.
Right. So I think what you're saying makes sense, however, I think in the, the culture of the town right now, I think there's a, there's a lot of interest in the public having a lot of transparency and a lot of say, without it having to cost money, because that's a class, you know, that eliminates the possibility of some people from having a say at all if they can't pay the $1,000. So I thought that the, this particular streamlining was very positive in that sense, because it gave the public time to weigh in without costing them anything, which is equal opportunity for all of them, and that perhaps in this case, we should work really fast to try to change the ordinance to reflect that culture, you know, that, that, I think that this town has really made a lot of, a lot of expression for wanting more participation in these things, and in deference to that, I think I would rather go in that direction than to go by the book here, as long as it's defensible in court. You know, I hear what you're saying. I agree in principle to what you're saying 100%.
You know, I'm still saying, those are the rules. If we want to, if we want the rules changed, I would suggest that, we recommend that they be changed. And as far as waiting for the next iteration of the zoning code after the new general plan is adopted, we've waited a dozen years now?
More than that, John.
Well, yeah, if you go, if you go, if you go to start with the chambers visioning process, that's back another 16, 18 months. So we've waited a long time. I, you know, regardless of what's going on, it looks like it's going to be a bit longer, and then we have to do the revisions of the code that do take a long time to get them right.
Well, if we could do what you're talking about...
Bobby, this could be another three or four years.
Well, if we could, I'm perfectly willing to, to do what you're saying, to do tonight with this issue, but only with a caveat that, that we can recommend a change that will make that happen right away, you know, than I could...
I'm sorry. Did I cut you off?
No, no.
Commissioner Monet? I, with Tom's, I mean, with our city attorney's backing, I, I think we should really focus on public participation. I have no idea if there's going to be public participation on this lot line adjustment at all, but, you know, I'd like to hear it and I'd like to vote on it. I mean, you know, given Mr. Brown's assent that this is legally defensible, let's, let's have the hearing.
I can go along with that, too.
So I think the options before the commission tonight are either to make a motion to act on it, or a motion to remit this decision back to staff. And should you choose to act on the item tonight, staff would recommend that we add a condition to address some of the concerns that were mentioned by Commissioner Monet and email to the commissioners, provided at the dais as well. The amended condition would read, "This approval is subject to approval of a record of survey or the other acceptable document by the County of Napa, allowing the property to be issued a certificate of compliance if required or deemed necessary by the county in order to record the modified lot line and update the parcel boundary."
I would, yeah, oh, go ahead. You were going to say...
Well, yeah, I have some, here we go. I have some questions about this email exchange and the proposed condition, and I'll go back just to, you know, the city's lot line adjustment process. Who reviews the lot line adjustment deeds for the city before they record?
The public works director and planning department review legal documents and legal The public works director and planning department review legal documents and legal descriptions of boundaries prior to recordation.
Okay, so the city reviews the legal descriptions for the proposed parcels before they record. Well, then.
Then they're required to be prepared by licensed surveyor.
Then it doesn't seem to me the county has any place in the process at all.
Ms. Monet had some concerns over the legality of the smaller parcel, although it seems like you may have addressed those based on your comments. And so this is simply a condition intending to address the concerns that were voiced by.
No, that I understand, and I'm just expressing my opinion here. If I understand the staff report correctly, legality of the existing parcels prior to lot line adjustment is a requirement for approval of the lot line adjustment, and staff has made the determination that these are legal parcels.
Correct.
It's, I don't understand what basis there would be in this record for determining otherwise. I mean, are they legal or aren't they?
Staff feels they are. Ms. Monet was given some information, though she mentioned an export aim was provided to the commission in email that made her question that.
Yeah, because the, the city ordinance referred to having to have certain, certain recording with the county, which the, which the title person said had never been made. And so that, so that these properties weren't recorded with the county, they found no certificates of compliance.
Well, no certificates of compliance are required to.
Well, they are by our city ordinance.
If I could weigh in.
But that was confusing to me, but I have been, yeah, I, I mean, just to explain why I was.
Well, Tom, please explain to me when certificates of compliance are required by our ordinance.
So, so one thing for the commission to bear in mind is that under the MAP Act, this parcel is conclusively presumed to be legally created.
Because?
Because there is no evidence that, the parcel is located in the city of St. Helena. There is no evidence, nor am I aware, of any ordinance that was in effect at the time this lot was, this parcel was created, that regulated maps, which is the standard under, and so the provision of the MAP Act is 66412, that says, as a matter of state law, this lot, this parcel is deemed to be, is conclusively presumed to be legally created.
So that wasn't the information that I got, because the information I got was, was involved, parcels that were changed after 1958, after 1955, between 55 and 64. I think I put it in the, I have, that's what the information was given to me. But you might be talking about something entirely different, but all I can say is it was confusing. I was trying to make sense of it, and that's all I've been doing with all of this communication, is trying to make sense, so I knew what I would be voting on tonight.
So staff had no concern over the legality of the parcels? Ms. Monet had some, and so this condition is purely a belt and suspenders approach to ensure those concerns, in an effort to address those concerns.
I'm sorry.
That part I understand. My concern is it creates a confusing record. Frankly, it suggests there's a question, where as far as I can tell, there really isn't one.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that the county would have any interest or jurisdiction in, in issuing a certificate of compliance for a city property.
Well, I think, I'm pretty sure if I needed a certificate of compliance, I'd be applying to the city of St. Helena. And, and I'm also pretty sure that although it's been adapted over time to a variety of circumstances, the amendment to the MAP Act that provided for certificates of compliance was made at the request of the banking industry so that they would have some assurance before lending on a parcel, and so there would be a mechanism by which they could be assured that the parcel on which they were making a loan was not illegally created. So, to the best of my knowledge, the county of Napa requires certificates of compliance only when there is a question as to the legality of the parcel. And typically, it's a property owner who advances an application because they believe they have more legal parcels than show on the assessors map. And so they don't have the benefit of a presumption of multiple parcels, but they believe they can prove one by application. And I'm pretty sure that would be the same here in the city of St. Helena, which is why it just doesn't seem to me to be an appropriate condition. But that's just my opinion.
I think that, and I'm reluctant to speak for, for planning staff, but my understanding was that there was a flurry of, of email exchanges involving Commissioner Monet earlier, expressing some concern over the legality of the, of the parcel in question. I only was able to look at those after the fact, and I think I share your view that that condition would not be necessary.
Staff completely agrees it's not necessary. It was, again, meaning to address the concern that Commissioner Monet had. Obviously, it's at the discretion of the commission whether they would like to include that.
I'm okay with not including it. I was in the position of getting a lot of information from a lot of different perspectives, and it, you know, and not having a deep background myself, but, you know, so I, I would like it there, but if the rest of the, if it's irrelevant, then, then there's no point. So if it's irrelevant, then I'm perfectly fine with not doing it. But with respect to what Commissioner Knudsen was saying, with respect to hearing this item tonight, I'm a little torn, because at our last meeting, the public was assured that we would hear it again. And I don't know how many people, I don't know if any people are here for that item, but there is someone here for that, and I think we promised to continue it to this meeting, and I think we, irrespective of, you know, I totally respect what you're saying, but I think for my, to me, that, that trumps going by the book here. I think we should follow through on what we promised last time at our, at our meeting.
One more comment about going by the book. The book is what's available to the public. The book is what is available out there to read. The book is what's available out there for you to determine what you need to do as a project moves through the process. If we decide here tonight to ignore the book, to do something different, how is a member of the public to know where in the process to insert their comments and what their ability is to do so? If we make on the move adjustments, as it were, for the sake of what we believe is simplicity, although I agree that it could be simpler, it could actually be more complex, what we're doing tonight. But if we make changes on the move, how is the public to know what is happening, when it's happening, and how it happens?
I don't think we should make changes on the move, however.
We're making a change on the move, Bobby.
I know that, but last meeting, we made a commitment to the public to have, to hear this item tonight. And I think if we hear the item tonight with the caveat that the, the book is going to be changed to reflect what we want to do with respect to the public, that satisfies me. I hear what you're saying, and I, and I think it's true, except it doesn't take into consideration what is, what is the public supposed to think if they get a commitment from the planning commission to hear something the next meeting, and then we don't hear it? I mean, you could argue that as well, and I.
May I suggest the commission shouldn't have made a promise.
Possibly so.
That they were not empowered by the book to make.
That may be true, but, that may be true, but.
That should have, that advice on that should have come from staff.
Okay, so we have some advice from our city attorney that we can proceed. I'd like to make a motion to actually hear this.
Public hearing needs to be opened first.
Yeah, well, to hear it, not to, not to vote on it, but I, you know, if we're in this position of whether we hear this or not, I, I would like to make a motion that we actually hear this and proceed forward with the approved process that Tom, that Mr. Brown has told us is defensible. And that also honors our, our town's desire for input and, public input that's, that's available for them to participate in without paying, paying money.
I'd like, I'd like to hear the applicant's, what the applicant would like to do.
Well, didn't someone suggest that we?
Before we do anything.
I thought someone suggested we needed to make this move first.
Bobby, I'd like to hear the applicant's.
If we have noticed this matter for a public hearing, I, my understanding is we're compelled at a minimum to open the public hearing. We're not compelled to act. We always have the option of continuing our decision, but I don't think there's any question about whether or not we need to open the public hearing.
That's correct. The public hearing could be held, and then the decision could be remitted to staff on the direction of the commission.
Would you like to speak?
My name is Kevin Alfar. I'm the chief operating officer of Coppercane, Coppercane, that Cooper Crane. We're the parent company of Wagner Ranch, which is basically owned by Joe Wagner. I have lots of things to say, but I, I can't let go what was said last, in that I was asked if I wanted to have a vote of the commission of the last meeting, and I said, I'm happy to let the public or the neighbors call me or bring more information and defer it to now. And I've spoken to a number of the neighbors, and their concerns were view shed and vineyard views and development and this, that, and the other thing. And I'm going to state what I said before, we're grape growers. And we intend to farm this property long term. The whole motivation for the lot line adjustment is to bring some parity to the lot, to the configurations of the lots, to the zoning. Simple as that. I'm not an attorney, I'm not a surveyor, I'm a business person, but it makes sense to do it. And I can appreciate a process, love processes, I think that you need to have processes for a whole host of reasons. But to your point, sorry, your point is that we shouldn't be changing a process that we agreed to last meeting, and that we're going to change it willy-nilly. And that's a little upsetting, and, and as I'm going to say, as I did last time, we're in no hurry to do this. But having said that, we need to go through a fair process. And if the process is, the staff can approve it, and the attorney signs off on it, and so on and so forth, then we should just move along. I mean, honestly, we're not going to develop the property. That's not our plan. Our long-term plan is just to farm it. Our leases burn off in 2020, and we're going to farm it ourselves. Joe's father, Chuck Wagner, is, is the owner of Camus. The green box is, all goes to Camus. The beige box goes to Preger, and we intend to farm it. Don't tell Preger that. So, but the point being is that, you know, we're here to farm property, and we're here to configure it in a logical, rational way. And what I also said, and I don't see any of the neighbors here, and there's somebody apparently here, and I've spoken to a number of them, is that, you know, the underlying value of this property has a lot to do with entitlements, too. I mean, we paid that. So the zoning has a lot to do with value, and we've paid for it. Again, we planned to farm. I agree with Mr. Hardy's comment about, you know, the county approval of the MAP Act shouldn't be a condition. I totally agree with that. I think that's about it, at least for now. But again, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that there may be, but, I mean, we need to follow a process, and I think we've been dealing in good faith, and we're here for another meeting. I've actually changed all my plans for this evening for this, so, what that's worth. So.
Thank you. All right, now, open public comment. Did you have something to say?
My name is Jason Stroff. I live sort of close to the green area. My in-laws live sort of close to the peach area. I came because I had the yellow notice in the mail and really didn't understand what was going on. So I really came here just to learn, to see, there wasn't a lot of information. I tried to get more information, trying to look online. Everything's black and white. You don't know what's switching. Even looking at these, I mean, quite honestly, and I could probably sit down with you later on today, it's difficult for me to completely understand what's going where. I see that, that little box is, is moving, but what else is going on? It's hard for me to judge whether I would have an issue with anything, because it's difficult to see what's going on. I guess one of my questions to you would be, if, if really, and it makes me feel good that the idea is to continue to grow, because I think that would be the concern amongst my in-laws primarily. But, you know, if, if you're growing today, you know, what's, you know, why do you need to do the adjustment? And I guess the question for me would be, by doing this, would that enable in the future building where you couldn't build today? So that'd be my primary question, just, I mean, I like the simplicity, but just, could something happen in the future that wouldn't happen today with these lot lines? That's it.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Close public comment.
I can speak to the development potential of the parcels. This lot line adjustment doesn't affect what can be done on the parcels whatsoever. The zoning designations are what they are, they're not changing as, as part of the lot line adjustment.
Thank you, Aaron. I could have answered that one.
I have a question for the applicant. What's the building on the site currently?
In fact, I got called by the neighbor, and I think it's, the last name is Inch, but it's not on here as a legal owner. That is a shed, which actually doesn't really have much of anything. He actually asked if we could change the siding that he can see. And again, it's not a shed that we use, because we leased, well, the property is used by Preger, so, you know, we're going to do what we can. And, and I've told every neighbor that's called me, and most recently, somebody who just bought one of the parcels here on the bordering, that, you know, there are farming practices we can change that, you know, that makes sense for us, and, you know, reduce the, you know, environmental concerns to the neighbors, we're happy to do it. But that is a shed. I think it has some minor equipment, and maybe a hope flower or something like that, but it's nothing.
I was just, I was just curious, because I haven't seen it.
Yeah, it's not storing chemicals or, you know.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, it's, you know, a prior existing use.
It is. It's been there for years.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Oh, no, I don't have a question. I was just, this has no bearing on whether or not we should approve this tonight, but in response, I'm thinking that unless the owner of all of that property wanted to develop the medium-density residential, then, then it's the same now as if, yes. But if the owner didn't want to develop it, but wanted to sell it to someone who wanted to develop it, there's a big difference. If it were left the way it is now, he could only sell that little piece without selling the whole thing. The owner couldn't, couldn't just sell the medium-density without this lot line thing. He could sell that little piece in the corner, but whoever bought the property, if they wanted to develop the other, would have to buy the entire piece, including that thing. So there is a difference. And that is, that is not a difference that I would consider in terms of voting on this application tonight, but it is a difference. So I just wanted to say that.
John?
My only true concern with this application is process.
Agreed.
It doesn't, you know, my concern's got very little to do with the application as shown. It makes excellent planning sense to do it.
Certainly does.
I would hope that any other oddball, cut in half parcels like this that are part in and part out of the urban limit area, and I would hope those be diminished next pass on this thing. But being we've got what we've got, and we've got a written process that is available to the public, that we should stick with that and not change it, because it is the written process, it is the entrance for the public, it is what you have to read to tell what the city's going to do and how it's going to do it. And we shouldn't change that just because we believe it is more streamlined. That's what the public has access to. That's what the public sees. That's what the public can read and hold in their hands, is how this process works.
I'm sorry to disagree, but I think the, I mean, I'm very supportive of this lot line adjustment. I think it's great. I mean, it seems obvious to me to do it, but it's not about the fact that the public has a process, that we're disregarding a public process. process. The public has an appeal process under the current rules, under what our city attorney has told us that we're allowed to do this. The public's just had a voice. And I think having more public voice is always a good thing, and I'd really like to make a motion to approve this lot line adjustment. I'd like to, I don't know what the language is, but I'd like to put that out there.
Well, I'll second that motion. I want to add something to that. I think that, I would like you to add to the motion a condition that the ordinance be changed, or whatever it is, be changed. You can't, we can't do that.
You cannot condition an individual decision on...
Oh, but we could give instruction to you, or we can...
That's not on the agenda for tonight, so that's a separate discussion item.
Could we get it on, could we ask for it to be on there? Is that inappropriate for tonight?
After we decide this individual item, I can look at the process for putting an item on the agenda.
I think what you could say, Bobby, if you want to say something about how this is done, is that in the future, until the ordinance is changed...
Okay.
...we want to see them done as written.
Okay.
And that's not, that's not beyond what's in the staff report, because the staff report makes it clear that we're doing something different than what is written.
So, well, I actually don't want to add that to a motion, to be honest. That's not a motion I would make, because I think that it's all separate.
Well, I'll second your motion on this.
Can I just say that I think staff hears loud and clear that the commission would like to have this heard another time and have this discussion had another time. But from a legal standpoint, on the decision before the commission this evening, it wouldn't be appropriate to add conditions or references to other sort of ongoing operational preferences of the commission. And so, I would just, I would encourage you as a commission to give direction to your staff on this separately from this item.
I would hardly think city ordinance would be a preference, but fine.
Bless you. Have any more comment?
Well, I'm rarely without something to say.
Thank goodness.
So, with respect to this lot line adjustment, I'm going to echo some things we've already heard. It makes sense to me. I think it, this accomplishes precisely the sort of things that lot line adjustments should accomplish. At the same time, I'm inclined to want to caution everyone not to place too much weight on the expressed intentions, however sincere and strongly held, of the property owners. I'm reminded of something a very savvy lawyer from Southern California once told me. He said, "Planning is indispensable. Plans are useless." And his point was, things change. And so, one always has to keep in mind that things do change. And I also think Bobby is correct. As a practical matter, although I believe it's irrelevant to our decision, I don't think it's in any way relevant to the appropriateness of the lot line adjustment. The, this change in boundaries that aligns the boundaries with the zoning does, in fact, facilitate development in the future at whatever time that's the desire of the property owners. And that, that's what I see, and I think that's just fine. Not because I want development there or don't want it, but because I don't think that has anything to do with our decision. And, you know, just so that everyone understands my view on the existing ordinance and the process, I don't believe that public participation in every decision is a plus. I think there is a place for ministerial decisions. I think there are things that not only legally can be determined by staff, but really, we have a better system and a more orderly process if they are approved by staff without public hearings. We have, in my view, a kind of hybrid process for lot line adjustments here in the city of St. Helena with the presentation to the commission. But I don't have any reservation about following the ordinance as is. And to the extent that there's a concern about the burden of appeal, then my response is to think, okay, that's what should be addressed, not creating an extra public hearing along the way. But as with many things, perhaps most, not so much concern that everyone agree with me, but rather that we have a well-articulated discussion. And I certainly want to be sure you understand what I'm thinking, and then I'm quite content to move on. So, I'm ready to vote on this motion anytime.
There is a motion on the table.
The motion is without the additional language around the county, is my intention.
And the second. So, your motion is to accept the staff...
Yes.
Recommendations?
Yes.
Is that what you're seconding, Bobby?
I thought that your motion was to hear this tonight, make a decision tonight.
No, I've already, I've moved on from that motion. Nobody seconded that motion. And we already heard from the public, so I'm ready to approve this staff.
Oh, I see. So, you're, oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's...
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
No.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Great. I think that was a well-articulated discussion. So, thank you for everyone. And staff did definitely hear some direction coming from this commission. We'll take it to heart as we bring items forward, and we will not assume past direction from the commission in moving things forward to this commission. That being said, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of the chair and vice chair. So, this is another big item of commission business, and I would welcome some discussion and nominations.
I'll nominate Grace for chair.
I second.
And I'd like to nominate Lester for vice chair.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Can we do this by acclamation?
Roll call, please.
Could I just clarify that the roll call will be on the slate that has been reflected by the two different nominations?
I've never been in a slate before, Tom.
That's efficient.
Particularly with Lester.
The two nominations were made, and the motion, as I understand it, before the commission is to approve the two nominations before the commission.
That's correct.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the department report. Staff wants to, staff wants to welcome, again, the new commissioners. I think there's been already some excellent discussion, and...
I thought you were going to reconsider.
But, so, I just wanted to first say thank you, and I had some notes here, and they have escaped me, so my apologies. But first of all, oh, thank you. Wanted to point out to the commission members, the new commission members, that staff puts together a tentative commission agenda, and it basically identifies the things that we're working on currently, the things that the commission has prioritized as items of interest, things that the staff has identified as items of ongoing interest that the staff's required to work on, and what's going to be coming before the commission at upcoming dates and what's before the commission. So, right now, the most up-to-date version is June 6. I do apologize for that. We typically don't let it go much more than 30 days out, but, so, just, it is in the back of the agenda. It's there every time. So, I would just encourage you to peruse that. It's trying to kind of telegraph what we're working on and recent decisions, those types of things. In addition, the, I don't know how much the new commission's aware, but the department's been operating without a formal building official for a number of months now. We have made an offer. It's been accepted, and we do anticipate filling that position in August, so we're very excited to have a new building official that'll fill our department back to full capacity with staffing. And I do anticipate being able to improve some of our customer service and code enforcement efforts. Currently, we're using consultants who are, they're doing an excellent job, but it's not the same as having a dedicated staff member. In addition, look forward to a SEQA 101, a land use 101, and a Brown Act 101, agenda items that we will be presenting to the commission. There's also some interest in a joint meeting with the city council, which that has not been scheduled, I don't believe, but we will notify commission of that as it moves forward. Just wanted to mainly point those two things out. Also, I do plan on trying to bring a general plan update to the commission and the council shortly. I had previously anticipated having the EIR, basically a formal opinion on the current status of the EIR around this time. I have not been able to formalize that, but that will be coming in approximately the next 30 days or so. So, look for that, both at the commission and council level. And I will be absent at the next meeting, and so Senior Planner Hickock will be running that meeting. So, that concludes my department report. Make sure I'm not missing anything else. And that's it.
No agenda for it yet.
Just review it. We don't have a lot of items to talk about on the next agenda, except for the CIP will be going on the next agenda for the Planning Commission to review for general plan conformance prior to it being brought to the city council.
What about getting the issue that we discussed tonight on that agenda?
So, staff will look at the process for doing that. So, this is a discussion of the current lot line adjustment municipal code. Staff will review the ability to do that. Without me being here, I'm hesitant to put that on the...
I would prefer that he's here for that discussion. Oh, okay.
But it will be...
Could it be on the next one, then?
Well, it will be coming, but I will just also encourage you to look at the list of priorities that the commission formally approved as a body, and this would be a new item added to that list of priorities.
Okay.
Are we done?
Until she bangs the gavel.
Meeting adjourned.